Some of the deliverables that we've been asked to do with our agreement with the Department of Early Learning and Care. So I'll show you guys what our progress report template is, so what that's going to look like and also the early version of the working plan. And what the 12 month, next 12 months is gonna kind of look like from our current point of view. Following that, we're gonna just start the idea or start the discussion of working group and what that could look like and really get your guys' feedback on that topic. And then we'll kind of start to wind down with updates from Valeria, general updates, and then we'll close. So we've allotted time for each of these topics, so hopefully we could stay and stick to that, should get everybody out of here on time. So let's, Valerie, can you start us with the welcome?
Of course.
Let me now run through the roll call. So Valerie, present. Sandy, I think I saw you. Yep. Angela Blackwell?
Absent.
Valeria, present. Ally Holzclaw?
Absent.
Ally Van Norman?
Absent.
Alyssa Severson?
Absolutely.
Alyssa Lane Kane? Absent.
She's absent today.
Okay. Deanie Smith? Absent. Okay, sorry. Sonia, I think I saw you.
Yes, I'm here.
Diane Teeman? Nope, absent. Jennifer Jackson?
I'm present.
Oh, hi Jennifer. And Josh Davies?
I'm here.
Julie Seestrom?
I'm here.
Christina Simpson? Oh, there she is. Lloyd Commander?
Here.
Michael Cherry?
Absent.
Absent. Modesta, I think I saw your name. Yep, waving, hi Modesta. Vanessa, is it Bay? Bahi?
Bahi and she's absent.
Okay. Okay. That concludes the roll call unless there's anybody I didn't call that's on. I know Valeria, you mentioned there might be a new member from Klamath. I don't know if they're joining this week.
I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Jennifer, if you want, you can let us know, but if not, it's fine. I don't think they've joined us yet.
Okay. Oh, and I see Vanessa. All of my girls present.
Did she get her stuff turned in, Valeria, to you?
Um, no, not yet. I haven't seen it yet.
Alright, because she did, she's not appointed yet by the tribal council. She was like getting her agenda request in too, so it won't be till the end of the month.
Awesome, thanks for working on that.
Okay, Valeria, it's the public testimony part of the agenda.
Okay, we have not received any public testimony to review with you.
Okay. Okay. So now, we're gonna do a little get to know you exercise. I think how this can work is I'll just select somebody at random. And then after that person goes, they select the next person at random. We only have 10 minutes for this exercise, so we'll see how many people we can get through. But it's just gonna be, let me share my screen. We have a little spinning wheel with questions, and so whoever goes, just has to answer the question, and then they could pass it along to the next person. Let me share my screen. Alright. Let me. Okay, I'll pick the person Lloyd. Lloyd Commander, can you guys see my screen? Yeah, okay. Alright Lloyd, what's your favorite day of the week?
Favorite day, Saturday.
Why Saturday?
Oh, yeah, I get to relax a little bit.
The weekend, right? Okay, okay Lloyd. You could pick the next person.
Yes, sir.
Keeping it C T U I R. Ooh, Modesta, what's your favorite flower?
Uh. I guess roses.
It's the Rose Festival in Portland this week too, or I think it's all month, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I should probably go check some of the festivities out. Okay, Modesta, pick somebody.
Val, Valerie.
Alright Valerie. Let's get your question.
I knew that was coming.
What is your favorite sport?
Basketball. I love to watch college basketball, especially the Jayhawks.
Oh, Kansas.
Yep.
Does that mean you went to Haskell or KU?
Both.
Both, yeah. A lot of KU fans in my family went to Haskell. Alright, go ahead, Val, pick somebody next.
Sonia?
Alright. Favorite movie?
Oh, favorite movie, um. Finding Forrester.
Ah, that's a good one. I haven't watched that one in a long time.
Yeah, I liked that movie.
Has anybody else seen that one? Has everybody seen that? It's a pretty well-known movie, yeah. But, yeah, I should re-watch it. Okay, next person Sonia.
Julie?
Alright Julie, see your question. Who do you look up to the most? That's a little deeper one. Is Julie on? I guess I should confirm she's.
I'm sorry, my first, my first response was my mom.
Your mom?
Yeah.
I think that'd be a lot of people's answer as well.
And I choose Josh Davies.
Alright Nicole, can you let me know when it's been roughly 10 minutes? I forgot to look what time we started. Alright Josh, here's your question. Well, that's a, if you knew you were going to die tomorrow, what would you do today?
Well, you know. I definitely try and reach out to everybody that I could inside and outside of my family. Especially with all of the stuff happening in our country today. Taking my kids to school was something that I just, you know, was accustomed doing. And then all of a sudden you hear of that, you know, massacre. And it just kind of puts things into perspective again. And so it's for me, it'd be telling everybody that I love them and you know, to hopefully carry on my legacy.
Yeah, that's a very practical and realistic response. I bet you whoever came up with this wheel was thinking you'd say you go skydiving or something.
Right, yeah.
But that's not very realistic, right?
Different circumstances if, different things are happening, but I'll, I'll pick Sandy.
Alright Sandy, let's get your question. I hope it's a lighter one.
I was gonna say, make it a light one.
Least favorite chore, that's a good one.
Uh, mopping. Really don't like to mop, no.
Do you do the Swiffer or do you still?
No, but I will tell you that I did buy one of those Bissell steam mops, right? Which has really made the process a lot easier. So I would recommend for those of you out there that hate to mop, invest in one of those Bissell steam mops. Cleans your floors fabulously and you don't have to mess with the nasty water. Great. What?
Yeah, I think we just got the, it's kind of like a Swiffer, but it like sprays out in front of your, your Swiffer and you can clean that way, but we actually haven't used it yet.
Well, don't, Rhuba is my favorite friend, my professor, yeah. So, yeah, you can see what kind of a housekeeper I am.
Yeah, to get it automated, get the robot.
Everything, yes, yes.
Alright Sandy, I'm assuming we're not over time yet, so pick the next person.
Uh, you know, I have to. Jennifer Jackson.
Okay. Favorite movie? We already had this one, but you could answer it again, unless you want me to respin it.
Yeah, you better spin that one again, because I don't watch, I don't.
Okay, okay, we'll respin. Favorite, oh, we did that one too, unless you really want to answer it. Favorite day of the week?
You want me to answer it?
Here, let's respin, let's try again when we haven't got it. We might be running low on questions though. Uh, how did you meet your best friend?
I gave birth to her.
Your best friend's your daughter?
Yep.
Yeah, I know. Parents and their children could get really close. Um, I'd say my sister and my mom are best friends as well. They hang out all the time. Let me see.
One more, time for one more.
One more, okay. Alright Jennifer, pick somebody to go next.
Uh, Christina, how's she going yet?
I don't think so. Alright, spinning for Christina. Favorite book?
Oh gosh, that's kind of a hard one. I've been reading so many children's books the last five years. Gosh, I don't know, I would say like any fiction, I really am into fiction. I'm having a hard time picking one though, so I don't know if there's a different question I can answer to be, if you guys want a more specific answer. I haven't read many adult books lately. I could say, I could say Clifford.
Oh, the big red dog?
Yeah.
Okay, Clifford. Now we know. Alright, alright. Well, thanks everybody for, uh, you know, answering the questions. We'll try to keep these similar type of exercises for the next, for next calls as well, just so we could all get to know each other a little more. As we're going to be working together. So let me see here, and let me get out of this. Let me check the agenda. Okay, it's time for the breakout session. Valeria, are you able to assign folks?
Yep, I can get started on that right now.
Okay, then we'll start the breakout session.
Welcome back everyone, yep, I think that's it. Thank you everyone for going into that breakout session. We'd like to ask our chair and any of our tribal advisory committee members what they want to bring forth.
Sure. You know, and anybody can jump in if I'm, you know, not saying this correctly or if I, you know, need clarification. But we discussed having a mediator in the tribal room. The tribal room was, was made for exclusively for us to talk about issues. Whether, you know, in ELD or the work that we're doing or, and and for some of the comments that were made, you know, one of them struck me really hard is that it was being, you know, they felt like we were being viewed as not able, not capable of self-governance. And another is that we, the whole process is confusing. And that we are having a moderator to tell the, the state and interpret what we're saying to the state is like we cannot speak for ourselves. And so those are the things that we had discussed in the meeting. And that not having that government-to-government relationship, you know, with the ELD and the nine tribes, you know, that's missing. Okay, so. So I guess I'll welcome any comments back and, but first I'll, I'll check in with the other tribes to see, you know, if there's something that I missed or there's, if there's something that you want to clarify. So. Sandy, do you want to help me out here?
I will help you out there, alright, thank you. So the, and again, my, I need my tribal members to, my peers and the group there to correct me if I go astray here. So I believe the consensus in the room, in the tribal breakout room is that we don't feel the need for a facilitator in that space. That we would like to have that space respected as being tribe, nine tribes, nine tribes only. That we want to, that we want to utilize the pre-meeting that we have prior to today's meeting, the one that usually Val and I and Valeria and whoever else, that we, that we use that to thoroughly brief Val and I on what subjects need to be covered in the tribal breakout room. If there's something pressing that needs to be covered. And, and we can do that there versus having a facilitator in the room with us. We don't want it to hamper our conversations. That fairly accurate, guys?
Yes.
Any other comments on this that others want to bring their voice into? Well, please feel free to come off mute anytime or share any thoughts in the chat. And I want to acknowledge that that didn't feel good to you all. And that it felt, you know, that, that we have a view of our tribes being not capable of self-governance or that this falls outside of that government-to-government process. And so I want to apologize and acknowledge for that here now for you all. And give you just a, a little bit of, I guess clarity on why we asked and you gave us the answer. And this was really just to ask if that was something that you could utilize in your space. And you told us that it looks like, you know, you won't need a facilitator in that space. And we, and we want to respect that and, and make sure that that happens for you and that that space is protected for the nine tribes going forward. We love that suggestion, I think, of utilizing those pre-planning meetings to thoroughly go over agenda topics and also offer the space for our tribal advisory committee representatives to bring their own agenda topics that they want to talk about or focus on as we continue work together on this project. So, uh, thank you and really appreciate all the comments that were made. And, and I know that we are in a space of transition. So we're figuring out how, I think, our Kaius team will work with our group and help support and advocate for you all as tribes, which you are definitely capable of on your own. So don't want to make any assumptions there or, or, you know, have you guys feel that way? So, um, I think that moving forward, we'll make sure that that happens. You know, that it is those nine tribes in that room. And then we will make sure that there's those active efforts in the pre-planning for these meetings that bring us together more closely and that we're sharing those agenda items and ensuring that your voice is reflected in our agenda as well. Is anyone else want to comment or move forward?
So you could move forward?
Okay.
Okay, yeah, thanks Valeria, well said. I know we wanted to, we had that question on whether or not if we'd participate in the breakout. So we got the answer, which is, which is where our objective was, so. So next on the agenda is I wanted to share with you all a couple of documents, kind of preliminary documents that we've been asked to produce as part of our agreement with the Department of Early Learning and Care. So the goal is to just share these with you. And then if you guys have any questions or feedback on them, to please let us know. I see, let me share my.
And again, they are just working drafts.
Right.
We really welcome your input. So this is, yeah, something that I can sort of tee up to with, you know, like Jonas is saying, you know, this is, this is where we're sitting at with hoping that we can come to agreements within this process that build out what our tribal hub implementation plan will look like. And, and I think that they'll be able to just show you an idea of what this could look like. But certainly want, you know, your influence to be first and foremost, you know, our, our, our driver in this work, if that makes sense.
Yep, so this first document is our initial kind of work plan or schedule, if you will. And it's based largely on the contract or the agreement we have with the Department of Early Learning and Care. So that's why you'll see it time boxed from May to April. It's because we signed a one-year agreement and you'll see the tasks on the left as well, it's also included in the agreement. But I also want to kind of reiterate that this is all preliminary and we understand things will change as we get into it. This was kind of the first pet of it of what we think it could look like or how we thought we'd work together. But as we found out today, things changed and we're going to be kind of agile and nimble with it as we go. So I'll kind of just walk you through this and then, like I said, any questions or feedback, go ahead and come off mute or put it in the chat. So you guys can see my screen, right? Yep, okay. So we kind of started off with, we started in May, you guys were introduced to us. So we, just the introductions and kickoff of, hey, Kaius is coming up to help. So that's, that was that first milestone for us, that's why I've graded out. And then part of task one in this project management and launch is we're going to produce a monthly progress report. And that's the other deliverable I'm going to share with you here in a couple of minutes. But that's going to be a monthly thing, as you can see these green dots throughout the, the contract lifecycle. And you guys will take a look at that template here shortly. The other thing is the work plan and schedule, what you're looking at now. We also have an Excel version that's going to be more detailed in tracking of tasks. And I guess a little more in-depth, which we, I didn't think we needed to share here now since we're still kind of building that out and figuring out how that's going to look. But that was another deliverable we're going to produce here in June. You see, we're slightly behind schedule, but like I said, this is going to all be work in progress and things will happen when they happen. Just because the natural cadence of the way we're working with the monthly meetings and getting to know everybody, et cetera. The next task is meetings and recruiting interested parties. And we're calling the, you'll see interested parties, but it's also called the working group. And that's, that's our next agenda item after I show you these two deliverables. And so we'll get into that here in a little bit and you guys could hear more about what, what that is and what that could look like or really get your guys' input on that. And part of that will be an inventory of these potential working group partners or interested parties, we might call them. So these two are related. One's just the approach and the other one's the actual list of partners. And then another part of our agreement with this, with the early learning department is that these tack meetings, we're going to help facilitate these, help push along the agendas, capture minutes, et cetera. And a part of that related to that would be the, the working group. Once we, if, if we establish this, if it's decided that the tech wants to do it, we'll do working group sessions as well, which would be separate. So keep in mind, this is preliminary and nothing's been decided on this. And we'll bring up this here shortly in the next agenda item. And all this work that we're doing in this call with the potential working group is leading to a couple of these other deliverables you'll see down here. And the main deliverable being the implementation plan. But we're going to establish the consultation process. And then we'll establish the tribal hub design included in that would be like the logo and the communications, et cetera. And you'll probably notice actually the communications deliverables are not laid in here yet. That's just because we haven't fully agreed on that, on that, on the contract yet or that agreement yet. So there's more to come still from the communications perspective. But the end goal of all of this, of us coming to help you guys, of the early learning and of the tack is to get to a point where we're producing this implementation plan. So this will draft of that, we're hoping to have by January, again, it's just an early estimate. And then the final version by the end of our contracts in April of next year. So I mean, initial reactions or feedback? Let's see the chat.
Sorry about that, I think I accidentally replied to everyone.
Okay. Yeah, if there's any questions in the chat, Nicole, Valeria, just let me know. If no initial questions or feedback on this schedule, I'll jump to what the progress report will look like.
Okay.
Okay. So the next deliverable, deliverable we'll be producing is this monthly progress report. It's pretty straightforward. It's pretty straightforward, um you've probably seen a bunch of these before, this is kind of based on some. Other contracts we've had and other progress reports we produced and we also got a little bit input from Valeria, but this is also. Could change, right? None of this, none of these documents are gonna be locked, it's done if we want to start tracking something or we want to start. Um, capturing something else in the progress report, we can always implement that down the road, but this is just the initial cut. Um, so it will include um a screenshot of the summary schedule. Um, the high-level schedule, the one I just reviewed with you guys. It will in- include a summary and status of our deliverables that we owe. Um, the status is very simple, it's completed in progress, it'll be past due, it's not started, etcetera. Another thing is probably want to add a notes column here, I was just thinking that. Um, and then we'll want to call out our key accomplishments during that period and since he's a monthly, it'd be. That's one month um is the period. Um, we'll start identifying issues and remediation steps, we'll start tracking potential risks. Um, and steps to remediate those. Um, we'll call out key activities that we're planning for the next month and then we'll track key decisions. Um, what those decisions are and who approved those decisions. Um, and then, like I said, we could start, we could customize this report any way we want to. Depending on what we need, but we thought this was a good starting point. Any questions or feedback on this document?
Jonathan, it may be worthwhile to, I guess, note that, you know, our, our role as we understood it when we. Um, worked with the state to propose on it was to um basically facilitate. Uh, getting to a point where the implementation plan was, was uh, you know, included a, a. Kind of high-level design as well as uh potential costs and. Effectively what you would want to have to be able to um then move forward. And so are, we sit pretty much in in between. And our goal is basically to help you accomplish your objectives as well, it's, it's not to. Um, get in the way of the government-to-government relationship, it is not to add an additional layer. It's basically to be some arms and legs, um and some, some experienced arms and legs having done similar types of work before. So we're certainly not here um as a spy for the state. Um, and I think in many, many respects um. Uh, we're being all, all of us on our team, being native and being, being a native-owned company. This is all personally very important to us, so I think, I think it's worth saying um that. Any, any objections that you might have um or any ideas or recommendations that you might have. We're certainly willing to listen to those and the whole idea here is to figure out how to help. Get to a tribal early learning hub that can be launched and and leveraged by the populations that we all come from.
Yeah, thanks for that, add-on Randy. Um, since there's no questions or feedback, um we could move on to the next agenda item. You, and you heard me mentioned in the work plan, um this idea of the working group. Um, and how that's, and how we're gonna leverage that, so. To move on to the next uh agenda item is a discussion about that and uh Valeria, can you kind of kick that off?
Yeah.
Put some background and context on the working group.
Yes, um, so as you all know and we've been discussing, you know, our, our purpose really. And what's out, what's outlined in our charter is to. Put together how we're gonna operationalize our tribal early learning hub. To better serve, you know, our native populations here in Oregon, specifically our tribal children and families and. So um, we're really hoping to um, you know. See what you all think so far and start really an initial discussion and consultation with you all. About how you see this working out or how you see your role within the TAC driving this, this body of work and so. Um, part of that, you know, included our rules process, which you all were part of and um. And continue to be part of as we start moving forward with some of that stuff and so. Um, as we build the tribal hub, I know that the state is really um wanting to ensure that this. This tribal hub has connection points with other early learning system partners, which could include. Um, you know, other, you know, native-serving organizations, it could include our regional CCRNRs, our regional. Uh, sixteen other regional early learning hubs. Um, we want to hope, or we hope that it will also make connections with other systems that support children and families. Over the identified sectors that we talked a lot about within our rulemaking process, so like. Uh, behavioral health being a really predominant one, um Oregon Health. Uh, or Oregon Department of Health and uh Human Services. And um Oregon Health Authority or connection with OHA's behavioral health work. Because we are also, there's a lot of moving parts for us as an agency that. Will shift and affect the work that, you know, gets to tribes doorstep, right? So we're, we're, we're currently looking at how to, how do we understand that better and how do we um. Um, get information about how the system is currently working or. Or not working in support of native children and families, tribal children and families, so. Um, we hear, like, this is our main advisory group, you guys are leading this work, so we want to understand. Um, if there's anything within our current structure that needs to change, because we know that. There is a lot of work to do ahead of us and only so much work can be done. Um, within our current structure, because we have a ninety-minute meeting once a month. And um, I don't, you know, it, it, it's, we need to be thinking about how realistic that. Would be to accomplish what we're trying to do, um if we're only meeting. Um, once a month with the ninety minutes that we have and where can we lean on? Um, other supports or um structures that may exist to get information to help us along the way. To that, that North Star, that um early la- uh tribal hub implementation plan. And so we're hoping just to kick off the conversation right now and see what your current thoughts are. Um, as shared earlier in the work plan, you saw that there was mention of a working group or some kind of working group that we would. Um, that Kais would help facilitate with, which would garner additional um potential resources or. Um, subject matter expertise, um because as it currently stands, you know, I'm, I'm not sure. That we have um, you know, every single sector represented in our TAC, right? We have a lot of folks from our education departments and and from um various different parts of government. Um, including, you know, council men and women that um are part of this group, but who else? Are we needing to include and how do we want to rely on other? Um, parts of our system that we know are helping uh raise our children and families and be part of this with us and so. Um, just starting the conversation really around how um you see the role of our TAC. In, in that picture and then what can we do to build on this structure? To make sure that we do get successfully to, you know, launching a tribal early learning hub. And what does that look like for each of you? So that's where we're at right now and hoping to talk a little bit about that with you all, I do have um. We do have some specific questions that we could start to kick off and um hear from you all. But I, I'd also like to just pause and um hear from each of you or from some of you. Who have things popping up for them right now or want to share um what's important. Um, to you as we're discussing some of this and have presented some, some things to you and uh. And what do you think is not, maybe not of interest or not as um much of a priority?
You know, I guess I will uh start with part of the conversation of. You know, you're, you're talking about ninety minutes um uh per month. And it would certainly be nice to get this group together and have that first initial. Working group with all of the, the nine tribes that are present and were. Uh, then, you know, decide where are, are who would be a part of that uh next. Um, maybe that smaller working group, if that's what you're looking for or, you know, what, you know. Or what do we envision that looking like? And um another, you know, and I realize that COVID is still, you know, strong out there, however. You know, we really, uh although uh most of us do know each other. We really haven't had that time to bond and to um, you know. Uh, discuss some of these things outside, a lot of the, the things that you see or hear um. Through the education clusters, because we have been able to um, you know, build those relationships. And I, I think that's part of what's missing is that we haven't been able to build that relationship here. You know, so I'll let any, I'll let uh somebody else chime in.
I, I'm trying to think of how to. How to say this, I mean, I think it's really good and I'm appreciative and I think I, the, the roadblock that I have like in my head is that. The idea of the tribal learning hubs came from the tribes, we have advocated for this for years. And um, I just, I feel like. There's just been so many little. Things that we're, we're not able to, to get to the work, I mean, it, to me, it's not something the state is doing for us, it's something that we asked for. We wanted this learning hub because not all the tribes were able to successfully partner with the. The hubs in their areas and um there were specific um services and grants. We wanted to be able to apply for, for tribal kids and so um. I don't know, it's just like every time I come, I'm, I'm like, what am I missing that? I feel like it's like a circle and um. But I, I'm appreciative, I know ninety minutes isn't a long time, but I, I just had to put out there that. This idea came, Val and Modesta worked with their lobbyists for years before it even got picked up by the state to. To um, to carry it forward and. I just feel like sometimes that's getting lost in, in the work.
Thank you for making those comments and certainly um want to, you know. I, I definitely, like, we're in a learning phase, I want to acknowledge that too, because. This is a new relationship and I appreciate that we need more time to develop our relationship. And capacity to support our tribes, part of that is, you know, this committee even forming, right? And, and doing intentional listening and and going through the proper steps for consultation. Um, and, and so I'm curious to know too, maybe if, if Sonia, you. Or, or others have any ideas about how we can ensure that. That, that, that tribal voice isn't lost in these steps and. And that we, we continue on a road that feels, you know, mutually benefiting and we. And we know why we're here today, right? It's because of the advocacy work that came from the tribes and their persistence and. In asking um for this tribal specific hub, so how do we um? How do we make sure that the idea stays intact as part of our goals? And I think that that could come out really in our goals of how we plan to implement. And so I know it feels a little bit um right now ambiguous, because we are. We're, we're creating something that hasn't been done before for, for our state in Oregon and so. Which is, you know, just to say, you know, we're, we're in this also learning development stage. Um, as we continue to meet and identify uh the priorities and, and, and items that we want to include in this project. And, and work for the future.
I would just add to as, in my role as a facilitator, the way that I understood coming into this project. Is that the whole point is to accelerate the project, that's the point in bringing on Kaius. Um, and Kaius's team and that's the point of the working group, out of respect for the government-to-government relationship. We understand that as tribal representatives, you don't have time to both govern and do your jobs. And do the entirety of all this work of creating an implementation plan for the hubs to get us from A to B. So the point of bringing us on and the point of creating a working group. Would be, it's all to provide support in areas that, you know, you don't necessarily have time for. Um, so our goal and, and our hope in, if you all agree to move forward in creating a working group is to get your input on. What groups you would like to see represented, what individuals, etcetera, so that when outside of this ninety-minute meeting. The rest of us can be doing more of the legwork to push this forward.
Yeah, just to add to that, I think Sonia, Sonia, you said something that could, that would be kind of an example of. What we're trying to do with the working group, you, you mentioned that the existing hubs were missing specific services and missing specific grants. That are, that are specific for your community, so that's the type of stuff we'd be interested in learning more about. And then that would be considered, do we need to include that as part of the hub, which sounds like we probably would and, or would those services and. Uh, are those organizations that produce those services and grants need to be part of the working group? Or at least people we need to go reach out to and consult and so they could advocate or be a part of. The solution, which is the implementation plan or the tribal early learning hubs. I just wanted to call that out, like, I think that's the whole point of the working group is to try to identify those, those gaps and. Then they could help uh fill some of that.
Is it okay to ask a question? Um, the uh, the Kaius um group that you uh folks are representing. Uh, how long have you been uh doing the work that you've been doing, like um, you just started up just now or you've been around fifteen, twenty years? Or how, how many other tribe, how many other situations like this have you all been working with over time?
We, we um, Kaius was launched, originally launched in two thousand and six. Um, and um, in those early years, the majority of work that we did was uh primarily technology. But also, you know, doing things such as uh website design and development hosting. Um, in twenty seventeen, we launched our, our government practice. Which included federal, state, and local and tribal governments. And since then, we've had quite a bit of success with different contracts. Um, everything on the, you know, health and human services side, uh public health, medical to um. Um, technology as well as uh, you know, Department of State, DOD. So we've got probably over in the last. Sixteen years, uh probably about a hundred and fifty different contracts. Um, so, and then each one of us bring to the table, uh Jonas, uh Nicole, myself. Uh, a lot of varied experience well beyond the Kaius world.
Thank you so much for that, I'm, I'm new to uh, uh our tribal government, while I'm born and raised here in, in Goose Bay and, and. You know, my whole life a member of our Confederate Tribes of the Coos or Anka and Sayusla Indians. The the government process, uh, I just got into like last September of last year and then with this E L D process, uh, shortly thereafter. So uh, one of the the big wake up things for me to learn how to um, deal with and navigate has been the government to government situation where we have city, county, state, and federal people that we got to deal with, no matter what we do. Anytime you you turn around, so there's like so much process. And each person has a different way of consulting. You know, we talk about consultation and how critical that is to each government and all that kind of thing. So that that's why I just wanted to find out this a little bit about you, you guys and and your track record and your and what kind of, what kind of, you know, projects you've been dealing with and that kind of stuff? Because anybody that can help us to cut through whatever kind of bureaucracy that we're dealing with so that we can do the best thing we can for our children, you know, I I'm thankful for y'all. And I and it sounds like you're sincere and that you don't want to tell us what to do or how to do it, that you respect us for being, you know, that you have a panel full of people that bring so much uh, to the table here. And it sounds like all you want to do is you want to help us put it through, you know?
Very much, Julian. I appreciate that. Um, and and that is our, that is our perceived role or expected role is to help help facilitate both the the nine tribes and the state get to where they want to be by the end of the year. And, you know, often, you know, I know you guys have day jobs. I know you've got, you know, weekend interests and things like that. So the state in in their, you know, actually in their wisdom thought to hire a company that could help both of you accomplish your objectives. They're your objectives. They're not our objectives. We're certainly going to own them and and adopt them. Um, and Nicole comes with actually a very unique experience. She spent, I don't know, six or seven years uh, in the city with with Seattle. And her job effectively was government to government relations with this, with the city. So she was sitting between the city, addressing similar types of big issues um, with uh, all the tribes in the Puget Sound area.
And before that, at the federal level, advancing several major policy initiatives, including educational initiatives um, on behalf of all federally recognized tribes with the federal government.
So I'm I'm hopeful that, you know, Julie, we can accomplish what you're you're um, talking about in terms of us helping you not only drive the agenda, but also um, make sure that we're communicating to all of you uh, in between these meetings uh, about where things are going and and what we're doing. Um, we're we're not really trying to uh, create a separate type of uh, you know, a parallel responsibility. It's all about helping you accomplish what your your goals are um, and what the state's goals are. And I think I think they're common. I mean, to Sonia's previous uh, conversation, um, we come into this long after you've already accomplished the hard work was really getting the state to pay attention to the tribal needs. And and now it's just a matter of, let's make sure that that momentum that you've already got continues so that by the end of of the period, whether that's a year or or even less, we can get to an implementation plan that talks about what you're going to implement. And then we can provide some support to determining what that timeline might look like, what the schedule might look like, what the cost of doing this might look like. Um, and that's that's our goal. That's our role.
Um, just in the interest of time, Valeria, I see we don't have a lot of time left. So I imagine if any of the other tribal representatives have any other comments?
Yeah, as I say, we should move on. Then the point of the
Hold on, Jonas. Let's let's see if anybody has an anymore.
Yeah, I was.
So this is, this is Modesta. And I, my comments are, I'm I'm wondering if we're um, maybe jumping the gun with the working group. It's my understanding that we are currently, the representatives from the tribe that you see here are the tribal advisory committee. We're not actually the tribal hub yet. Um, the the early learning hub. And I think this committee was put together to start forming, you know, um, the tribal early learning hub. Um, I guess groundwork so that when it was implemented, then, you know, they wouldn't have to go back and, you know, do all this charter stuff and rules and all of that kind of stuff. And I think the um, you know, bringing on Kais Holdings is uh, maybe um, uh, might be a little bit more, um, I guess, I don't want to say predictive, but i- you know, at the tribal early learning hub section uh, when we get to that point, because I understand what Valeria is asking um, in the sense that, you know, we're really um, the early learning hubs that we have around here, they partner with a a great deal. Uh, uh, you know, a lot of community partners. And, you know, it's a very robust group that they work with. But um, again, we're still at the um, uh, consultation portion. I think the government to government part. And I think, I think some of my hesitation with this is that, you know, we've already been down this road about trying to include uh, non-tribal representatives in this in this particular process of the advisory committee. And um, so I think um, I don't know if the tribal advisory committee really wants to start speaking for the tribal early learning hub at this point. Um, so maybe that's just, I don't know if that's my misunderstanding or if I'm just not understanding how this process is going. But um, I think at this point where we're trying to really develop, you know, and lay the groundwork for the tribal early learning hub, it is a government to government process. And I don't know that a working group bringing in outside entities outside of the nine tribes is really the direction that we want to go. Maybe uh, it, you know, is there a conclusion to this advisory group? And, you know, the tribal early learning hub begins or uh, you know, do I misinterpret that whole process?
No, Modesta, I think I appreciate that. Um, if you, if you think back to the timeline that Jonas was showing earlier, the the working group actually wouldn't even have its first session for another three or four months. The that the activity today was really to talk about kind of the purpose. And with the the goal of it is not to replicate any skill set, subject matter expertise.
So I was I was kind of, I was directing that towards the other eight tribes. If I was misinterpreting the process we're going through.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure. Are there other comments?
Does it look like it? Um, you know, there, I know that you guys want this done and you want it done quick. And that's not, you know, or that's the feeling that I'm getting. And, you know, when you rush the things, you also miss things. And we're trying not to to do that, just much like the bill that we passed, that we had passed, you know? Um, although it was brought to the government to government, there were things that we missed in the bill because, you know, like you're saying there, um, there's so much on, you know, everybody's plate, but at the same time, you know, we also talked uh, talked about why we um, chose to take the family representatives out. And then, you know, you're coming back around with, are we inviting the right people? Or are we invite, or, you know, we have that um, parent um, representation with the folks that are sitting on this call, you know? And we, you know, and if, and determining how we um, roll out this tribal advisory hub, whether that's um, a main site and uh, satellite sites or whether that's one that's, you know, in one part of the state, you know? Uh, we have, and those are the things that we haven't got to get together to discuss, you know? And the ninety minutes that you're, that uh, you are asking us to come together, isn't going to do that. You know, we need to get together and and start, you know, through um, discussing some of these things. And, you know, and I don't, I don't mind that, you know, that Valeria that you're leading, you know, this is what we need to talk about today. This is what we need to do today. Or this is, you know, this will get us on the, you know, get us on a track. But, you know, um, uh, part of that is, is, you know, you're we have the nine tribes, there's eighteen of us. And from that eighteen are we going to choose that working group? So I I, the the whole process is a little bit confusing for me. So I would like to hear from somebody else from the other eight tribes, if they, how they're feeling.
I want to say thank you to uh, yourself, um, Valeria and um, Modesta for the work that you've done to set this up for our children for the last uh, unknown years that you've been working on this with the legislator, with the state, with the government and that kind of thing. And again, because I'm such a newcomer to the situation, um, I have to defer to the two of you because you you've you've been in the mix from day one uh, as far as like how to move forward and the pace that we need to go and that kind of thing. Um, you know, if it's too soon to have the Kais uh, group uh, come and help us, you know, if we're not ready for them, um, perhaps it's something that, you know, we set aside for now. And uh, we humbly, humbly ask them to, you know, bear with us until we're ready for them. Uh, maybe they can help us in the future. I don't know. But that's the, this this process of, you know, I my hat goes off to everybody who's been in the government to government process for the last many years because I've only been in it from September till now. And uh, you know, it's it's a, it's such a a big uh, stone wall as far as any progress goes, you know, with uh, the bureaucracy, you know? So um, if, but if we're not ready for that, if we need to put in more work time, like if the ninety minutes a month is not enough, if we need to set up a, an additional half hour or hour where we meet, um, you choose, choose one representative from each tribe and we meet, you know, another half hour a month, another hour a month or whatever it is, you know, to uh, to make the progress we need so that we can move forward. You know, we got to do whatever we got to do, you know? But again, I I defer to those people who have been in this mix so much longer than myself. You know, I'm representing the C T Kluusi. Um, and I've been an educator, you know, over thirty years in Hawaii and New York. But now I'm here in Oregon, you know? So so I have a lot of experience and I have all kinds of education, but you got, you guys have boots on the ground here. So uh, I have to defer to you as far as, you know, which way we're going to go with this. But I can give you another half hour a month. I can give you another hour a month, whatever it is that we got to do so that we can get ready to move forward for the best interests of all our children in this state.
Thank you for all those comments. I I want to recognize that we're over time. So um, don't want to hold you if you are um, going off to other meetings, but um, want to just uh, say that we should probably make a request through email to start um, deciding um, or helping, uh, asking the questions for you all to decide on how you want us to proceed. Um, so we can send those out and have you all um, even participate in your own email to if that works for now and then schedule out some time that we need to take to keep talking and and discussing um, and moving through uh, consultation around how how best to move forward. Does that sound okay for folks?
That sounds good to me, Valeria. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Guys, have a wonderful rest of your afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.